America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting of City Council, uh, regular meeting to order in City Council, City Hall, Council Chambers 389 Spruce Street, the second floor, Morgantown, West Virginia, 26505, on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Additionally, as always, we're being broadcasted live via YouTube at the City of Morgantown YouTube page, and now if the city clerk would be so kind as to take role.
Yes. Bill Koepke?
Here.
Wheezy Michael?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Celine?
Danielle Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshbarger?
Here.
Brian Butcher? Mayor Buganam?
President. And the first thing we have is our approval of minutes. We have the February 18th, 2025 special meeting minutes, the February 18th, 2025 regular meeting minutes, February 25th special meeting minutes, and the February 25th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Were there any changes? Anyone?
I'm good.
Everyone's good? Backlamations?
Yes.
All right. Today, we are fortunate to not have correspondence. And now we have our public hearing, and that is an ordinance amending the city charter to use gender-neutral language. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so now. Three. All right, and I'm going to close the public hearing. First, we have our unfinished business, and that is our consideration of approval of the second reading of an ordinance amending the city charter to use general-neutral language. Our city attorney, Ryan Simon, can you be so kind as to tell us about it?
The basis of the terminology throughout the city charter is to refer to city officials without solely using the term "him" to reflect that people other than males may serve in those positions. It is a proposed charter amendment by ordinance, and the public hearing was, notice was published and scheduled for tonight, so if it is adopted by council this evening, here are no objections at the public hearing. It will become effective on the day the state end in the ordinance.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Okay. City clerk will take.
Yes. Bill Koepke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes. Passes 5-0. Onto boards and commissions.
Mayor, I would like to nominate Chelsea Vilmeyer to the civilian police review advisory board.
Is that a second?
Second.
Backlamation?
Hmm.
Mayor, I would move to appoint Lauren Capisa to the Woodburn Commission.
Oh, second.
Backlamation?
Yep.
Mayor, I'd like to appoint Chloe Hernandez to the Health and Wellness Committee.
Second.
Any backlamation?
Yes.
Any others? That's it? All right. Now, we are on to our public portion, which is subject to the rules established by council and adopted by resolution. Please stay cognizant that you have four minutes to speak and to state your name and address before you talk. And I'll open the floor with our own communications director, Brad.
Find a nice spot for that.
Grab the paper for us.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
All right. First, we have Mimi Ferguson. Is it the public portion?
Yeah.
Yeah, first, we're going to do the names on the list, and then we'll, and then you'll get an opportunity to, we'll still open it up for anyone wishing to comment. Hello, Mimi.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to come and let you guys know, or my name's Mimi Ferguson, I live at 424 Stewart Street, First, sorry. I just wanted to quickly let you guys know that WVU Student Government Association has scheduled our next safety walk for the spring, so it's going to be on a Monday, so Monday, March 24th, at 6:00 PM. And we have two areas that we're focusing on, the downtown campus, so basically, we just drew a circle kind of extending out from the mountain layer, so it's going to extend up to Spruce Street, and then it's going to come down to Willie Street where it meets on High Street, and then back out to Beachhurst. And then we're going to do an Evansdale area, and we basically drew another big circle, but around the rec center over there. So that's going to go out to the Alumni Center and the McDonald's on University there, and then down to Birch Street, which is the street directly up from Patterson, Patterson, however you say it. But we would just like to welcome you guys to be a part of that, and if you guys have any questions, I can give you my email if that would be helpful. It's Mimi, M-I-M-I dot Ferguson nine at gmail dot com. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mimi.
All right. If anybody else now is wishing to speak, you're welcome to do so. Just leave them in the dressing room.
Can everyone hear me?
I'll shout.
It doesn't actually make it louder in here, it just works for home.
It's, yeah.
Okay, well, for the home audience, my name is Mark Brazida, 734 Courtney Avenue, Morgantown. I'm here to speak in favor of the resolution and support of the Green Belt. I've spoken to some of you already about it in different settings, but just briefly, a Green Belt would be exceptional for the health of our community, the physical and mental health. It would give people an opportunity to exercise, to walk around the city without the hassle and stress of confronting traffic. There are strong economic reasons for a Green Belt. It would be an exceptional draw for people outside of our city if we could say, hey, we have, like Cleveland does, like Boise does, we have this Green Belt. What a great testament to wild and wonderful Morgantown a Green Belt would be. It would also help, I think, the economics of our city itself if you give people an alternate way of moving around the city. They don't have to get in their cars, there's less wear and tear on the roads, there are fewer, we hope, potholes. Obviously, there are great environmental reasons to have a Green Belt. It's wonderful to, to support green space for all that green space does for communities, including such things as windbreaks, as the weather becomes more unpredictable, there are strong reasons to have a strong environment. Pieces of the Green Belt are already in place. The backbone of the Green Belt is, of course, the rail trail, and we have pieces of it in Marilla Park, White Park, other places, Dorsey's Knob, pocket parks around the city. So we have many pieces of the puzzle already in place, it just takes a little bit more to put them all together and give us a Green Belt. It's not going to be necessarily something that can be done overnight, although wouldn't that be wonderful, but with some resolve and determination, it can be done within the next few years, I believe. And again, what a great testament to our city and this city council to support a Green Belt. It already has the endorsement of Bo Park, the Morgantown Green Team, several neighborhood associations, and others in our community. So again, I urge you to vote yes in favor of supporting a Morgantown Green Belt. Thank you very much.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Hi, second to everything he said. That's actually why I'm here tonight. I'm here on behalf of all of the Greenmont Neighborhood Association. They came to speak at one of our meetings, and we decided as an association that we wanted to back the Green Belt, provided its approach with care and collaboration between all parties involved. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joelle Strau. I live on Hess Street in First Ward. I'm too. I'm here to speak in favor of the Green Belt, and I want to thank council for considering the resolution, and councillor Koepke for bringing it to council. You know, Mark gave a great overview of all the positives, so I won't reiterate those. But I just want to add on to that, that I think a lot of people who live in Morgantown see the rail trail as like one of the best things about Morgantown, and I would count myself in that group. The only limitation is that depending on where you live in the city, you often have to get in your car and load up your bike to get down to the Green Belt, and, or, sorry, the rail trail. And with a Green Belt, the idea would be to increase connectivity between neighborhoods such as Greenmont, First Ward, all the neighborhoods in the city, so that you don't have to get in your car, so that you can hop on your bike or just walk straight to the rail trail. And then by, you know, thoughtful connections, you'll be able to use the Green Belt plus the rail trail to commute, thereby reducing traffic and congestion. So I wanted to make that point, and then I also wanted to mention the safety issues. As a pedestrian and a cyclist, it's scary to ride on the roads, and we do have a lack of sidewalk infrastructure, and so I think the Green Belt would definitely improve pedestrian and cyclist safety. So those are the two main reasons I wanted to bring to your attention in addition to what's already been said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, I close the public portion. We have, sorry, no special committee reports, no consent agenda. And on to new business, the first thing we have is the consideration of approval of a resolution appointing a municipal judge. Look to our city attorney, Ryan, if he could just give us a quick brief.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this resolution is council's action, appointing Deborah Skidare as the municipal judge in accordance with the charter. It also directs the city manager to retain a, an alternate judge for the instances where Judge Skidare would not be able to serve for a case, and to take all the steps necessary to retain both judges in accordance with the city's established budget for the position.
Thank you.
Move to approve resolution appointing Judge Skidare.
Second.
All right. Discussion?
Call for question?
Yes.
Bill Koepke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes, passes 5-0. And then for those that are watching at home on YouTube and in attendance, we have our newly appointed Judge Skidare here in attendance with us, so if you would be so kind as to come up. And our city clerk here would love to do the swearing in. And welcome.
I, Deborah Skidare.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Charter of the City of Morgantown.
And the Charter of the City of Morgantown.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties of office of municipal court judge.
Perform the duties of the office of municipal court judge.
For the City of Morgantown.
For the City of Morgantown.
So long as I shall continue therein.
So long as I shall continue therein.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Thank you very much.
We'll take it from now on. That's all right. All right.
One, two, three. Great, thank you so much. I like that, I like that haircut I got. One, two, three. Fantastic.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, Judge.
Thank you, thank you.
You too.
Have fun with the next one.
Thank you, David. Next, we have consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance of the City of Morgantown approving for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the City of Morgantown Tax District 15, Tax Map 6, parcel 76-2, from an OI office in institutional district to an AB-2 service business district, and a portion of parcel of real estate in the City of Morgantown Tax District, Tax Map 6, parcel 74, from an R1 single-family residential district in the OI office in institutional district to a B2 service business district, and a portion of parcel of real estate in the City of Morgantown Tax District 15, Tax Map 6, parcel 76.4, from an OI office in institutional district to a B2 service business district, amending Article 1331 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Morgantown as shown on the exhibit here to attach and declare to be part of this ordinance as if the same were set forth here.
Well, I don't think of these much more explanation after all that.
At least you only had to read it once. Last week, Jenny had to do it twice.
So this is the rezoning of certain parcels, as stated there, to help facilitate the construction of the I Center and the parking garage on the WVU Medicine property. This does change them from their current to the OI. This was at the Planning Commission previous meeting, and they recommended approval, council approved.
Move to approve.
Second.
In unanimous from the Planning Commission?
I believe so, yes.
All right.
Yeah, there were no concerns raised. They came with three different cases before the Planning Commission, this being one of them, and all three easily passed through the Planning Commission, and a couple were moved on to the BZA, but this one came directly to council.
Call for a question, Ron.
Bill Koepke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes, passes 5-0. Next, we have consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance adopting the annual budget for general fund and coal severance fund in the City of Morgantown for the fiscal year 2025, 2026. And John Ferguson is in attendance, and please tell us about it.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. John Ferguson, the Finance Director here for the City of Morgantown. Thank you all for the opportunity to present this City of Morgantown's fiscal year 2026 General Fund and Coal Severance Budget. The proposed budget reflects our unwavering commitment to fiscal responsibility and the strategic investments within our communities, or within our community for our community's The budget is a culmination of extensive collaboration and dedication from a number of different teams, including finance, but more importantly, the city manager's office, including the former city manager, Kim Haas, our current acting city manager, Damian Davis, the man in the legend right here, also with Carol Allen, I do want to make sure that she does get a special shout out just because of how much she has helped out, we do appreciate that, and then also with, with our communications team, definitely Brad and Holly, we definitely, we truly appreciate all their help. So I just wanted to make sure everyone who did help out did get the recognition that they do deserve, including the finance team, which includes Denise Stefani, Samantha Baldwin, and also Courtney Latoshia. That being said, we did have a lot of hard work, a lot of.
John, and Assistant City Manager Emily Mozzarelli, who came and sat through a couple hours worth of a budget meeting with the baby for us.
You are absolutely correct, and forgive me for, I did not, I did not forgive her on purpose. She just hasn't been here.
She brought the pizza.
We are very.
She brought the baby.
Absolutely, that was very, very important. So a lot of people, a lot of hard work, a lot of effort went into this, we are very thankful. This is the culmination of that. Now, we're going to start right off with the general fund. I'm going to go through it very quickly instead of in detail. Please stop me if you do have any questions. I do have one area that I do want to point out, just because it did happen to be in the media over the weekend, so I just want to reiterate that. And it ties right into the very first topic here when we get into the projected general fund revenues. The very first category we have is tax revenue, which is projected and budgeted at $27,251,530. This revenue category includes, but is not limited to, property taxes, business and occupation tax, excise tax, hotel occupancy tax, and the general fund's allocation of municipal sales tax. And this is at the point where I'm going to stop, and we're going to, I'd like to take the opportunity to, just to describe the, our reasoning, and a moment just of reflection on our, our thinking for the municipal sales tax, why we are budgeting the way it is. Number one is that, just to brief, brief this, the city charter receives quarterly municipal sales tax revenue from the West Virginia Treasury in the fiscal year 2021, started July 1st, 2020, through the end of that fiscal year, June 30th, 2021. And fiscal year 26 will be the sixth consecutive year that the city will receive this revenue. As per city ordinance of 2022-19 adopted November 15th, 2022, which was an amendment to the city ordinance 2019-13, the municipal sales tax is allocated into four distinct buckets. The first one being 25% of such revenue collected is allocated to the capital escrow fund, 25% has been allocated to Bo Park, 25% has been allocated to reduce the police and fire unfunded pension liability, and then finally, 25% has been allocated at the discretion of council, which includes supplementing the general fund. Next bullet point is that the city's municipal sales tax revenue has since stabilized over the past five years, and while it does fluctuate seasonally, we are currently averaging $2.5 million per quarter. The West Virginia Tax Division is currently transitioning away from using the ZIP Code Plus 4 method to determine its tax zone for the City of Morgantown. And instead, in its place, they will now determine the tax zones based on current geographic information system data, or GIS data. During this implementation of this new method, the City of Morgantown was informed that this transition may result in a potential 10% decrease in the total municipal sales tax remitted to the city by the West Virginia Treasury in the following fiscal year, our fiscal year for 2026, the one that we are currently talking about for our budget. Therefore, in anticipation of this reduction, it's solely due to the state's adoption of this more accurate boundary determination method, and is not a consequence of any action or actions taken by the city. Very important. The West Virginia Tax Division is responsible for enforcing, collecting, and tracking which businesses collect and remit municipal sales tax to the state. It does not, we do not collect it directly. The City of Morgantown is responsible for timely submitting any changes to its municipal boundaries, such as when we have annexations of property or expanding our boundaries, to the West Virginia Tax Division, so it can update its tax zones accordingly. The West Virginia Treasury remits its municipal sales tax collected, that additional 1%, directly to the city on a quarterly basis. It's ACH directly into the city's municipal sales tax fund checking account. We receive one deposit each quarter from the West Virginia Treasury with the words "municipal sales tax" in the description of the remittance. That's it. That's as far as, that's as far as information that goes that we receive from the state. We do not receive a list of business names, we do not receive their addresses, we, nor do we have. We, nor do we have individual collection amounts. We simply receive one ACH deposit into our cor, into our account on a quarterly basis directly from the West Virginia Treasury. So I wanted to make sure that that was crystal clear. In response to the state's transition, our initial fiscal year 2026 budget has been conservatively adjusted to reflect the potential 10% decrease in overall municipal sales tax revenues. Again, this adjustment is a precautionary measure to ensure fiscal responsibility and to maintain stability in our financial planning. We will continue to closely monitor the actual sales tax collections and make sure any necessary budget revisions, if needed, will be made if the impact of the new boundary determination method differs from our initial projections. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's been made crystal clear for a number of years despite some folks' reluctance to believe. We did not tell which businesses to collect tax. We do not get tax directly from the businesses. Everything goes through the state and how they calculate it is up to them.
100% correct. Thank you. Back to our general. Total general fund revenues. Let's go back to general fund revenues. We have licenses and permits. It's budgeted at $359,000. This revenue category includes business license fees, building permits, and other code informs, code enforcement permits. We then have intergovernmental revenues budgeted at $180,000. This revenue includes federal and state grants related to the city's general fund operations. We have charges for services. This is a big one. It's $10,917,000. This revenue category includes inspection fees, municipal service fees, the MSF fees, fire protection fees or fire fees, and refuse collection fees, garbage fees. That's the big revenue category for the general fund. We also have inter-fund charges of $52,200. This includes charges from other funds such as the parking authority and the tax increment financing districts for their administration costs. We also have fines and forfeitures of $180,000. Revenue includes fines and fees issued by our municipal court. We have miscellaneous, which is $478,000. This budgeted, budget revenue category includes rents, reimbursements, interest income, and other miscellaneous income that's not classified in any other area. And then finally, we have our prior year balance carryover, which is currently estimated at $5,958,750. This budget category consists of our initial estimation of remaining fund balance as of the end of June 30, 2025, so we are projecting out where we will stand at the end of our current fiscal year. That amount that has been estimated is how much then we can use and carry forward and make available in our fiscal year 2026's budget. So overall, total general fund revenues for fiscal year 2026 are $45,376,480. Total expenditures for our general fund. I'm going to go through them very quickly. First, we have the mayor, which is $18,286. We have city council, which is $80,527. City manager's department of $1,099,378. The finance department, which is $1,139,532. The city clerk's department of $272,89. Municipal court of $229,71. City attorney at $461,864. Human resources of $641,317. Total contributions from the general fund are $619,279. Code enforcement is $1,247,339. Planning and zoning of $482,876. IT department, $966,327. City hall of $1,585,625. Total transfers to other funds of $10,113,103. Communications department of $368,206. Our contingency budget, which is currently budgeted at $400,000. Our police department of $10,655,861. Fire department of $8,113. Animal control of $36,426. Streets, aka public works, is $3,731,976. Equipment maintenance is $924,554. Garbage, $1,964,000, which does include an increase as of January 1. We did take that into consideration. And finally, urban landscaping of $338,731 for a grand total of $45,376,480. The budget is balanced. Any questions? Coal severance fund. This one is much easier. Total revenue from coal service tax is anticipated to be $122,000. Total interest income on those, on the balance that is in the account is only $450 for total revenue budgeted of $122,450. And total expenditures, which are contributions to Bow Park, of the same $122,450 are balanced, are budget balances. Any questions?
Excellent job.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, a lot of work.
It is a lot of work.
Thank you to everybody.
Many hands, a lot of moving, a lot of moving parts. Thank you.
Was it the rise of the tide lifts all ships? Everybody did a great job. Thank you.
Do I have a?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Discussion?
Just let people know that this is all available on our website. So if they've lost track of it, you can look it up.
You sound like that was a lot of information, as if it was years' worth of work. A month's worth of work for a year worth of months? Worth of work for a year worth of information. I got it.
Bill Koewke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes, passes 5-0. Next, we have the consideration of approval of a resolution approving the 2025-2030 capital improvement plan. John, is this going to be you again?
Yes, sir.
All right, welcome back.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me back. It's my pleasure to present the city of Morgantown's proposed five-year capital improvement plan for the fiscal years 2026 through 2030. This plan outlines a strategic investments plan for the next five years that will enhance the city's infrastructure and services within the city of Morgantown. Now, the purpose of the capital escrow fund and its five-year capital investment plan is that it is a strategic financial tool used by the city of Morgantown to manage and allocate resources for long-term capital projects and purchases. The primary purpose of this is to ensure that the city can effectively finance, plan, and execute multi-year projects without causing significant financial strain in any single fiscal year. It's a very nice tool you have. Now, the strategic uses, again, are to fund long-term projects and for major purposes. First off, for the multi-year projects, we have, we are escrowing funds, so we make annual allocations each year. We set aside funds and a portion of its budget into the capital escrow fund. This practice allows the city to accumulate necessary funds over several years, ensuring significant resources are available when large-scale projects reach critical phases. And by also escrowing these funds annually, the city can prioritize projects based on the readiness and impact in aligning fiscal resources with project timelines. And then also, we have for the purchase of major equipment and other capital assets. This is phased funding. Major purchases and projects are divided into smaller, more manageable annual amounts, and this approach helps us to spread the financial burden over multiple years, making it easier to manage cash flow and budget constraints. Our key objectives in our five-year capital improvement plan, number one is infrastructure enhancements. We are budgeting and planning for upgrades and maintenance to critical infrastructure, including roads, right-of-way improvements, and public buildings. Public buildings especially include the fire station number one for our apartment, the city garage renovations, and also for the woodburn property improvements. We are also budgeting for economic development through stimulating local econo, our economy through targeted investments in key areas that include, but are not limited to, capital investments in the Morgantown Municipal Airport and the demolition of dilapidated structures to eliminate safety habits and to promote growth. And then finally, we have community services where we are expanding and improving public services such as our parks and recreation facilities through Bow Park, very important, and also in our public safety. As a financial overview of our five-year plan, our total investment is a total of $60 million over the next five years. Our funding sources for that come from contributions from the city's general fund. This is the non-MSF or municipal service fee appropriations. We also have the capital portion of the municipal service fees for the streets department and public in the police department. We also have the capital escrow's 25% allocation from the municipal sales tax. And finally, we have the business and occupation construction tax revenue, very large component of our revenue. Timing of that is critical and is also worked into our five-year plan. And in conclusion, going to wrap it up, the city's five-year capital improvement plan is a phased approach to prioritize projects based on the readiness and impact while also estimating the revenue, timing, and best use of the city's financial resources. Any questions on our overall project or any of the projects, individual projects that are included in the plan? Okay. Thank you.
And that's not because we're not interested, it's just because we've already had meetings with-
Understood.
For public knowledge. We have all already met with you individually and asked our questions then.
And any other specific questions need to go to the man, our acting city manager, the man, the myth, the legend, director of Public Works, Damian Davis. He can tell you more in detail. I'm just the accountant. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Raise your-
Bill Koewke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes, passes 5-0. Next, we have the consideration of approval of a resolution approving the 2025-2026 budget for the city of Morgantown's capital escrow fund. And do we have a John Ferguson in the, oh, John!
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the opportunity. This is a discussion on the proposed capital escrow fund for the fiscal year 2026 only. Previously, it was for the five-year plan. This is for the actual budget for this upcoming fiscal year. Again, everyone knows the purpose of the escrow fund. Everybody knows its key benefits. Everybody knows the strategic uses, which are to fund major multi-year projects and also to fund very large purchases in such a manner that is not only, well, most importantly to me, such that we are fiscally responsible in putting away money every year towards these. So this is just this fiscal year's. Now, the projected revenue for the capital escrow fund for the fiscal year 2026 is 1.3 million in contributions from the city's general fund, which is the non-MSF appropriations. We have 2.4 million that is the MSF appropriations. This is the capital portion of the municipal service fees for the street department and police department. We have 2.6 million from the capital escrow's 25% allocation of municipal sales tax. Remember, that has been reduced by 10% for the anticipated probable decrease that might happen. Remember, if it does come in higher, we will make the appropriate budget revisions to bring that back up. And then finally, we have the current budgeted business and occupation construction tax revenue, which is at $1.6 million. Overall, the total capital escrow fund revenues are $7,749,759. The total budgeted expenditures, we have multiple categories. If you want me to read those, I certainly can, but the total combined expenditures are $7,749,759, and I can go into those in detail if you wish.
I think I'm personally good?
I think we've already had it.
And if anyone would like to read it, they can certainly see it online.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions? Once again, fantastic job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very thorough. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
And city clerk?
Bill Koewke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes, passes 5-0. Next, we have consideration of approval of a resolution supporting establishment of a Morgantown Green Belt. And Ryan, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked. You heard from some members of the Mondeley Greenspace Coalition, and many members of council have heard about this project either through past service on council, through service on Bow Park, or through meetings with the Land Reuse Agency. This is a proposal to work as a community to establish a green belt network around the town for pedestrian, bicycle, other non-motorized travel. And the resolution asks council, as the coalition has asked other bodies, to support that concept and work toward developing it, understanding that there is no specific route or path set and that it would be an effort where the city and the various agencies work with any, any property owners who would be involved in the project as well.
Move to approve the resolution?
Second.
And I'm not sure how much, I know that I personally love green spaces and I would love easier access for, as a first board resident, to be able to reach the rail trails.
Yeah, as a rail trail board member, we're always looking for ways to increase access points to the rail trail, and it certainly will help.
There are a couple of things I'd like to mention on this. It's not a new concept. It's been around for quite some time. I have to confess, though, the enthusiasm that the Greenspace Coalition brought to it and bringing it to public attention has really helped it move forward. And I'm very happy that the MPO, the Morgantown Planning Organization, has agreed to take this on as a project, and will look into the feasibility of this, this particular route. I think we're closer to it than we've been in a long time. And again, I'd like to thank the people who continue to advocate for it, and I hope that, I hope we'll see it sooner than later.
As was mentioned, they came to Bow Park a few months ago, and Bow Park unanimously gave our support of, of the establishment of the green belts. And as I said then, I will say the same with this body. I understand that we are not making any type of financial commitment by approving this resolution, but I do hope that we do approve it with the intention of action and helping to move this forward. Several of the neighborhood groups that I'm involved with have already offered their formal support, like Bow Park did, and some of the nonprofits and grassroots groups that I'm a member of are also very excited about it. So I am, I am happy to see movement and momentum and hope that we can be a part of that.
All right. Call for a question.
Bill Koewke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes. Next, we have a bid award for demolition of multiple structures. And I'm with you. Our-
Yeah, this is our Development Services Department put out a bid for demolition of five structures, 321 Raymond Street, 445 Overhill, 48 Falling Run, 476 Falling Run, and 782 Meadowbrook Road. They received four bids. Safeco was the low bid. I believe this is the first time we've worked with Safeco. In the past, we've worked with the other companies, but- In the past, we've worked with the other companies, but this is the first time Safeco's been the low bidder on this project. City plans to use CBG funds to fund this demolition, and we recommend moving forward with this.
Do you have a timeline when that's going to start?
Typically, you know, we'll award the contract, have a pre-construction meeting or pre-demolition meeting, kind of work out a timeframe. I believe in the contract with them, it's like 60 days.
For all five structures? Awesome.
And these are not properties that the city owns, these are properties that we have gone through the condemnation process and gone through all the legal to the point where they are ordered to be torn down and...
Yes. And they're not responsive from the property owners.
I make a motion.
Second.
Good.
Bill Kowicki.
Yes.
Wheezy Michael.
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull.
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger.
Yes.
Mayor Buganam.
Yes. Passes 5-0. Next, we have the bid award for the Coburn Creek Pedestrian Bridge in White Park.
This is an exciting project. This is continuing our efforts in White Park to build trails and build connections through the park and working in conjunction with our Morgantown Utility Board as part of the remediation of the water line that went through the park. This is one of the projects that we will be doing. This is going to be connecting the north side of the park that is already developed and has many trails through there to the south side, which is, has been underused over the years. And so this project is one of a few projects that we're working on in the park to build trails on that south side, and this will help connect those two. And so this will be a gateway into the park there and be a very nice complement to the new ice rink going on there, not new, but renovated ice rink as well. So SQP was the low bid on this project at 1.44 million. Our engineering estimate was 1.38, so this was within 5% of our anticipated project cost. So we recommend approving. Any questions?
Yeah, I do have some, actually. I'm curious to know what it's going to look like. I mean, after all this time and all the iterations that we've seen...
I believe there are renderings on our website under the project thing, and I can send those out to council.
Has other council seen this?
I have, but it's been, it's probably been close to a year.
Well, yeah, I'm wondering if that's, a year's time, is that really what we're getting or has it been modified so many times that it's not truly representation?
No, no, I'm sure it's, because it had to meet certain specs for flood control and state...
Oh, that's, I'm forgetting.
We did initially go through a couple of iterations.
My involvement with MUB, yes.
But then, once we set it on design, we moved forward that design. And as part of that, part of our bid package was on our website, we did have some renderings along with that, and I'll forward that on to...
I guess my concern is, it's, certainly I want it to be a usable bridge, utilitarian, but I'd like it to have some sort of aesthetic quality to it.
It does. It is very nice, yes.
I'll take your word for it.
It has, is the, both ends, concrete stone abutments look nice. It's about a six-foot wide, but it goes out to 10-foot in the middle to have a, kind of a viewing area, so you can stand in the middle while still having the pedestrians move freely through there.
Oh, good.
And so it is wider in the middle than it is at the entrance points. So, but wood decking, metal hand railing, wood railing, but yeah, all four, all four are showing.
Wood decking?
What's that?
Wood decking?
Composite wood, wood-looking decking.
Okay. Thank you.
And where is the funding for the bridge?
MUB is paying for this.
Just making sure.
This was part of that agreement from years ago.
Yes.
That does look nice. Negotiated over a long period of time.
Yeah. If Ryan has pulled it up, if you want to look at it later on.
I'm sorry?
Ryan has pulled it up, if you want to look at it later on.
Do me a favor, give me the site.
Yeah, I'll send it.
Thank you.
This bridge was a long time coming, but I think, you know, very happy that we've been able to work out an agreement between the city and MUB and see this to now a build stage and hopefully reality soon, so very pleased that we're at this point.
And we worked with MUB through the process to try to make sure that we were making the best use of the funds for this project. You know, we looked at several different options to try to meet both their concerns of, you know, cost and then, you know, the stakes that people were concerned with. And so just a couple of different iterations and ultimately was settled on, you know, two-span bridge essentially with a pier in the middle.
Phil, I just sent you photos that my husband took a couple of weeks ago at the co-op, at the outdoor meetup that folks had where Drew Gatlin was showing off pictures of the bridge that we had not yet seen.
Very good.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I'm excited.
It's a very exciting project.
It'll make a lot of people happy.
Six years makes sense.
Yeah, and gratitude to MUB too for their participation and cooperation.
For sure. All right, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
And city clerk, this way.
Yes. Bill Kowicki.
Yes.
Wheezy Michael.
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull.
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger.
Yes.
Mayor Buganam.
Yes. Passes 5-0.
May I ask one more question about that 4-0? Do you know what the timeline is on construction?
I think nine months. We're trying to get it built by fall. The biggest part of it will be the manufacturing of the glulium beams. Those will be manufactured off-site and delivered, and so that'll be the longest lead. The concrete abutments will go pretty fast, and then it'll sit there and wait for those beams to manufacture.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the consideration of approval of an amended 2025 city council meeting schedule. And for those that are watching at home, we are voting to move Tuesday meeting to a Wednesday meeting due to the municipal week in, is it Huntington or Charleston?
Charleston.
Charleston, sorry. In Charleston that same week, and so we would be having our meeting on the 19th instead of the 18th of March. And then by...
Move to approve?
Second.
All right. And again, this is to move our March 18th meeting to March 19th.
Bill Kowicki.
Yes.
Wheezy Michael.
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull.
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger.
Yes.
Mayor Buganam.
Yes. Passes 5-0.
City manager, report. I have nothing to report, other than how excited about that, that project moving forward.
It's been a long time coming.
Report from city clerk.
Thank you, mayor. On behalf of the Morgantown Fire Civil Service Commission, honored to share that after last week's promotional exams for fire captain and fire lieutenant, Brian Izzo will be promoted to fire captain and Andrew Dotson will be promoted to fire lieutenant after a successful five-day review period and successful medical exams. So congratulations to Brian Izzo and Andrew Dotson on this outstanding accomplishment. The Morgantown Police Civil Service Commission will administer the police officer entry-level test on Saturday, March 15th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. at the Public Safety Building located at 300 Spruce Street. A written exam will be administered in a two-hour session. Applicants who pass the written exam will be immediately directed to the physical agility test. Candidates passing both tests will sit for brief interviews with the members of the Morgantown Police Civil Service Commission. Something I haven't spoke about for a while are the residency requirements for police officers. Any police officer employed by the city of Morgantown shall establish and maintain his or her permanent physical residence within a one-hour drive time from the Public Safety Building, again, located at 300 Spruce Street. So as I explained at our last meeting, it's not too late to apply. So folks can check out our Morgantown Police Department website, and there's a button there that says "Apply," and you can do that there or call the city clerk's office at 304-284-7434. And then lastly, just a little election update. Today, we held our positions for the, the drawing for the positions of ballot. So the only ward that has two candidates is Ward 6. So the first position on the ballot for Ward 6 is Stephanie Hunt, and the second position was Mark Allen Downs. Again, our election is April 29th, and early voting, April 16th through the 26th, and that will be at the Historic Depot Building at Hazel Ruby McQuain, like it was two years ago in 2023. And again, Election Day, April 29th, and polls open at 6:30 a.m. and close at 7:30 p.m. We're still looking for poll workers if folks would be interested in doing that. Any questions? Please check out our website at MorgantownWV.gov and under Elections, or call the city clerk's office, and we'll be glad to take any questions. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Report from the city attorney.
Thank you, mayor. On March 18th, our West Virginia Municipal Attorneys Association will be holding its semi-annual meeting. We hold that meeting in conjunction with the West Virginia Municipal League Conference, so hopefully we'll see some of you all there. It's always a nice time to gather with other municipal attorneys and find some common ground and other ideas about what cities across our state are doing. It is exciting to see the, both the White Park Bridge project approved tonight and the green belt concept supported. I'll look forward to supporting the city in those efforts, reaching out and being a conduit to help the city council and the various city agencies who also support it with bringing that to fruition. I think that's all I have to report tonight.
Report from council. Who did we start last?
All right, you started over there. What are you going to do this time?
I'm kind of thrown off without having Jamie Bryant here.
Let me start.
That's, thank you.
Good, I'm going to be short anyway. Just a couple of things. One is, I really appreciate that we had the green belt resolution go through. I really wish that we could have read it out loud. It is included in our packet for anybody who is interested in, actually, that was composed by Mark, and I think it was well said. And the other thing I would announce is that we will have a span meeting this month, towards the end of the month, I think it's the 26th. I need to confirm the location. I believe it will be at the First Christian Church, but I'll make sure you hear it again. Other than that, that's all I have.
If you'd like, I'd be willing to read it right now.
Please.
Okay, so for those that like to know what it is we voted in support of, we are, we did vote in support of a resolution supporting the establishment of the Morgantown Green Belt. Whereas, since at least as early as the 1990s, the city of Morgantown is considered a green belt, a certain boon to the physical and economic health of our community. And whereas the city of Morgantown is deficient in the amount of green space it has per capita compared with the national average, and a green belt would serve the city and its residents in a myriad of ways. And whereas a Morgantown green belt would facilitate active transportation options, including walking, biking, running, and other non-motorized transportation. And whereas several cities in the United States, including Boise, Idaho, and Cleveland, Ohio, have successfully developed green belts, and many others are now planning them, and the city of Morgantown, as one of the prominent communities in wild and wonderful West Virginia, should create its own green belt to be at the forefront of innovations in sustainable ecotourism, non-motorized transportation, and outdoor recreation. And whereas the city of Morgantown is notoriously congested with traffic, and a connected trail system in the city will offer our community a safer way to commute to work, in school, or otherwise move around the city. And whereas the city of Morgantown values air quality, and connected green routes would mitigate the impacts of pollution, which can cause and/or exasperate asthma and other respiratory illnesses, and help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And whereas the city of Morgantown's well-being hinges on recreational outlets, and the establishment of green routes would encourage walking, hiking, and biking, and reduce the rates of obesity and diabetes, and improve mental health. And whereas the city of Morgantown would seek great economic benefits from a green belt, which would increase tourism and visitor spending, provide stormwater infiltration, reduce pollution costs, yield medical cost savings because of better health outcomes, and raise the values of local homes. And whereas the Board of Parks and Recreation, Bow Park, and the Morgantown Green Team have voted unanimously to support the creation of a Morgantown Green Belt, which has from the start been a collaborative effort by numerous individuals and community partners. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Morgantown supports the creation of the Morgantown Green Belt and commits the city to seeking and providing the necessary funding and logistical and technical support to achieve such a desired and beneficial addition to our community. And now we can say it has been adopted this fourth day in March.
Thank you for that courtesy. Well done.
Is that your report?
That's my report.
All right.
I don't have anything today, mayor.
Okay.
This Friday, March 7th, is First Friday for the Arts in downtown Morgantown. Several of the venues in downtown host artists or vendors, musicians. That will happen from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at various spots downtown. Saturday, March 15th, the Woodburn Association of Neighbors is holding its first of our bimonthly cleanups for the year. We will meet at 10:00 a.m. At the top of Whitmore Park behind the Mario's Fish Bowl parking lot, we clean up some neighborhood streets as well as parts of Whitmore Park. That is weather-dependent, because if it is cold and snowy, I will not be there. Just a reminder that we are heavy into our West Virginia legislative session right now. While we haven't seen a lot of meaningful legislation coming out yet, there has been a lot of statement legislation and some things that would affect municipalities in Morgantown, folks in Morgantown, from election dates to zoning and home-based businesses, things like that. So I encourage everyone to follow along at the legislature's website. You can listen to committee meetings live as they are happening. Definitely reach out to your elected representatives in the House and Senate and let them know your thoughts, one way or the other, on any of the things that they are considering. It's a crazy time in the state. Other than that, as has been mentioned, we, I think as Clerk Wade called it, we are entering March Madness, which means several of us will spend next week in Washington, D.C. at the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference, and the following week, part of the week, in Charleston at the West Virginia Municipal League Midwinter Conference. So if you try to get in touch with me or many of us, I'm sure during that time, we may be less responsive than usual, but I'll get back to you when I get back.
And I'm always sorry I can't attend those, you know, it's just unfortunate how, you know, work, work won't allow some of those things to take advantage of. So you all should have gotten a invite to the South Hills Meeting, which is next Thursday, the 13th, and it's at the Friends Meeting House there across from the old Superior Photo. And I know several others had indicated they were able to make it. So we'll gather at 6:30 and then have the meeting at 7:00. And so that's sort of the plan for next Thursday. Next week is a MUB meeting on Tuesday. If anyone has any questions or any issues they'd like brought forward, happy to do that, as well as a... And I'm always sorry I can't attend those, you know, it's just, it's unfortunate how, you know, work, work won't allow some of those things to take advantage of. So you all should have gotten a invite to the South Hills Meeting, which is next Thursday, the 13th. And it's at the Friends Meeting House there across from the old Superior photo. And I know several others have indicated that we're able to make it. So we'll gather at 6:30 and then have the meeting at 7:00. And so that's sort of the plan for next Thursday. Next week is a MUB meeting on Tuesday. If anyone has any questions or any issues they'd like brought forward, happy to do that, as well as a rail trail board meeting next week as well. And I would also just like to thank again MUB and the city for working the bridge deal out. That's, that's, that's a huge joint project that's really going to serve our community well. And I, that's all I have, mayor.
All right. Let's see, I don't have too much to report. Today was gorgeous outside. Speaking of being outside, June 14th will be the first, the first ward neighborhood yard sale. So dibs on that date.
Do you think you have enough time to prepare?
I hope so. And.
Very good.
Which helps me actually segue to my next thing, which is March 24th is the First Ward Neighborhood Association meeting at MTAC, which appears to be going on at the same time as the WVU Safety Walk. So I will have to try to schedule something to hear about everyone's concerns, even though I won't be able to be there.
That's also the night of the Green Month neighborhood meeting.
It's a very important day, March 24th is. And let's see. I think that is where I'm going to stop my report for right now because it's only 8:07.
Actually, it's the 33rd, it's the last Monday. Oh, hallelujah.
Oh, and then, oh, and which reminds me then, thank you for that reminder.
I was corrected. It is, it is the 31st, sorry, they couldn't hear her. It is the 31st. Maybe I put that on, maybe someone misinformed or I saved it on the wrong date at the last meeting.
And then I would say Ramadan Mubarak to all our Muslim residents of the Morgantown community. And if anyone has a motion.
Which motion are you looking for?
For the executives, Ash.
Yeah, I don't know if I have it on.
I move the pursuant to West Virginia State Code Section 6-9A 4B12, we enter executive session to consider matters protected by attorney-client privilege.
Second.
All right. Anyway, is that? It's not a record though, right?
No.
It's close.
Who keeps the records?
It's not too bad.
It feels like it should be a record.
That's a good question.